But that's.
It's a great idea.
It is a great idea.
You'll notice that Mike is not here this evening, so remind me to do stuff that I might forget to do that Mike does.
Yes.
I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for September 8th to order at 7:02 PM. See?
Oh, it was one. Oh, it did just change.
Just changed.
Yeah, before, if you had.
So, I couldn't have timed it any better. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone to the public to speak about anything that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
I have one thing. Go ahead, Carl.
Go ahead, Carl.
I'm Carl Larso. I'm here as an observer of the community party.
Hi, Lorraine.
I just want to remind everybody that since Mike Scott is not here, he will be doing the minutes from our recording, so keep the shuffling of papers to a minimum and the side chit-chats to a minimum because as we know, if you've watched the recordings, it's very hard to hear.
I will remind people too, if you're shuffling papers around or having side conversations, so not to be rude, but let's think about Mike and make the minutes easier for him.
Speak up when you're speaking too, because that's.
Oh, you couldn't hear me?
It's, yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, if you're sitting there, I don't know if you can hear.
Yeah, it sounds a lot more like Mike's.
Oh, all right, next.
Amazing.
Next time I'll yell.
I don't know about that.
If you zoom in, you will find that you don't hear as well.
Yeah.
When we're on the side, because he's projecting out or side.
Oh.
Nope, comment?
Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I will.
Jim?
Motion by Jim.
Second.
I will move to close the public comment period.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of village code changes and corrections. This is our ongoing topic that I really do feel like we have been making good steady progress on, and I feel like we have a good schedule to be finished in one, two, three, four-ish, well, maybe five more meetings after we do like a full final recap. But, so I do thank everybody for having your meetings, going through stuff, sending items to Mike to get clarification on, and having him create these spreadsheets for us. So, the last two meetings, we went over the section that Jim and Yumila had, and we finished those up, at least for the initial round. I did send everybody a link to a Google Doc. It's a new spreadsheet. You can all view it. You can't make any changes to it. I'm the only one that can make changes to it as we agreed upon, so we will only make changes to that spreadsheet while we are here in this meeting, other than I added grid lines to it upon request for printing, which is a good idea. So, that's all the spreadsheet that I sent out. I flagged on that spreadsheet when I created it, all of the recommended changes that were suggested to the BTD and HHS. That's a project that Carolyn and I worked on with the Business and Technology Park. So, those are highlighted on here as changes, but those aren't ones that are recommended by us. The one thing that we had recommended, I wonder if they want to do this, that was already captured on there anyway, so that's being handled separately. Natalie's actually drafted a local law for the trustees to review to adopt those changes into code prior to us finishing up all the other districts and things too, so.
So, if it's in yellow, that's an addition?
If it's in yellow, that's an addition, yes.
Okay.
That's something that's changed.
Not just something that's changed, but it is an addition?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so those are all the things that you'll see there. In the other districts, low-traffic food and beverage, for example, you know, we added that to, or the recommendation will be to add that to commercial low-traffic, so that's highlighted yellow. Medical laboratory, to add that to commercial low-traffic and commercial medium-traffic, that's highlighted yellow. There's two flagged as remove, and then the Outgo Rec Club recommendation was to add that to commercial medium-traffic and commercial high-traffic. You can ignore those orange ones for now. Those are ones that I saw discrepancies in, and talked to Mike about on what he sent out versus what's in code versus what he chatted about. So, the orange is just a, which is the right way here to do that. So, tonight, though, is the first discussion of the sections that Lorraine and I chatted about, and that's at the very top of the chart of uses, and that is everything from additional residential building on a single lot down to hospital. So, those are the things. You have a copy of those in front of you, the same kind of chart that Mike did last time. There's a chart. There are the highlighted definitions behind it. And the second packet that you have, that Mike sent out also, is the kind of questions and discussion points that Lorraine and I had. So, we went through these various things. So, with that, I'm going to let Lorraine kick it off, and I'll chime in, and that way I can take notes and do stuff. I won't be changing anything in this chart tonight. We'll wait until the next meeting after people have had a chance to kind of digest what it is that we talk about and ask questions and get answers, and we'll fill that spreadsheet out at the next meeting.
So, the first one we're going to talk about is additional residential building on a single lot. And my first question is, Mike, on your spreadsheet, you've got a plus after the X?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know what that means. But anyway, Mike and I talked about this, and one of the questions that came up for us was why CLT was special permit, and why, we wanted to know what the history was behind having CLT in the residential building on a single lot. And so, that was a question we posed to Mike Scott, and Mike Scott said he didn't know when it was actually adopted. In the 2005 codification, multi-unit was allowed but has since been taken out. He did offer to do further research.
So, this, according to the June 2025, this was X-plus?
Yes, yeah. So, the plus is a footnote, one. I just want to try to stay consistent there. So, the X is, it's allowed, and the one is, there's some just additional conditions that.
Oh, okay.
It's not a special permit.
So, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Is this what you're proposing, or what it currently is, or what?
Those, that's what we're proposing. He didn't highlight some of the cells yellow. So, like, right now, for example, you can have.
You're proposing this in BTD?
That was one of the things that we talked about, and yeah, I'm not sure why that was on there. I think that, there was one that, is that the one that Mike put in the wrong place, or is that somewhere online?
No, that was, that was somewhere else. Actually, it was, he had BTD and.
Okay, yeah. Additional residential, yeah, additional residential building on a single lot, that's not a BTD thing. That's a mistake, too.
Right. So, on his sheet, he did put SP, but you've got X-plus.
So, what I have here in the shared spreadsheet is just what the current code is, not what we're recommending change.
So, he, on his sheet that he distributed to us for this meeting, he's got SP for CLT for this.
The problem is, is the red, oh yeah, the red X is X-plus.
Yeah, it's really, it's additional conditions.
And that has to do only with 145-58.
Yes, yep.
And in this case, it's A, the definition is A. And I'm wondering if there's some way we could sort of, you know how it says down here, C, section this, whether we should include that?
We had chatted about that for another definition. I forget what it was.
Well, there, you know, there's.
Yeah. And a lot of those things need to be cleaned up anyway. Once we, once we say, yes, here, this is.
There's a lot of.
We need to go back through and reread those, because when it says, oh, you know, for example, this is covered under, you know, 14580M, it's not really M, it's really like N. Some of the numbering there is just off. The definitions are there, for example, or some of the additional requirements are there. They're just not referenced to the right area. So, I think that'll be that, one of those, like, maybe one or two final read-throughs to make sure that, yes, when we say this references this, it's actually the right thing.
I mean, there were only three categories that had reference to 14558.
Yep.
A, B, and C.
Yeah.
It was that, this one, and you're also alteration.
Alteration, yeah.
And then the other one was in temporary commercial activities. So, it's not like big, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't remember, Lorraine, when we were doing that, when we said the additional residential building on a single lot, was adding, was adding it to CLT for a special permit something that we had talked about?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we were, we were questioning why CLT was on here.
Right, that's right.
Why it was even on.
Yeah, why, yeah, why, why are you having an additional residential building in commercial low-traffic?
Yeah.
Versus residential. When you get down to multi-unit, you know, those things are added, and one of the other recommendations was to remove one unit residential from commercial low-traffic. So, if that's going to be the recommendation, and we're going to remove residential from commercial low-traffic, maybe it doesn't make sense to have it up here either, because those additional residential buildings on a single lot, those are something that would be covered under either the multi-unit residential or the two-unit residential. And I do have a little side note there, by the way, to group all the residentials together.
I see.
Residential comma, whatever it is, just.
Of the residence.
Just so there.
Yes, so that we can see them all at once, yep. So, is that our, I mean, is that what?
Yeah, that's, that's what we were questioning, is why we're even allowing an additional residential lot in CLT.
So, commercial low-traffic is. The light, so is there anywhere now where there is, oh, well, it's because here, is it because of, is it because of that across the street?
Mike didn't bring that up, and I would.
Across the street, but.
Right over here. Yeah, I would have thought that, you know, he cites that as an example for a lot of things when they bring it up, and he didn't mention that. So, I don't know if that's actually, I don't think that that's two residential buildings. I think there's a residential building there, and then there's, you know, a building there for other purposes that's not residential.
But, yeah, but, yeah, additional, when we say residential building, we don't specify, though, that it's a single residential.
And these are.
Oh, what does the 158 say?
Yeah, so this one is on, on single lot, includes any unit building permitted in the same district. It's not a very robust definition.
So, what I mean, if an additional is added to a single lot in either the low or medium no, okay, so it's, but if you look at the additional conditions, if an additional residential building is added to a single lot in either the low or medium, oh, residential.
That's residential.
Sorry, sorry.
Are you interpreting this additional residential building as there already has to be a residential building?
Yes.
Or the additional building is residential?
There has to be, there already has to be a residential building, and you want to build an additional residential.
And I don't think there are any other residentials except for that one.
And again, I don't think that's two residential buildings. I think that's one residential building and then another building for, it's either, well, it wouldn't be next to.
Well, my inclination is to let's get rid of it.
Yeah. Well, and so that's what, that was the recommendation that Lorraine and I had. Again, well, all this will get captured, it'll get sent out, and it'll, everyone can think about it again. But yeah, that was the question, is, everything else was fine, you know, having those two things in the residential district seemed fine. It was that commercial low-traffic piece that was the stick.
So, do we have any residential building in BTD?
That's a mistake. That's not supposed to be there. Yeah, that, that's not supposed to be there. That's, yeah.
Yeah, that's the.
That's not on anything.
Mike just checked that off by accident.
Okay, that's not on this one.
Yeah, it's not on the shared one that I created, because that's, that's an accident.
So, this is the one.
You ready to move on?
Yeah, good with moving on?
No, to safety.
That, that would be the recommendation, Mr. Rovino.
So, the next one is adult entertainment, and the first thing is, the definition for this is missing.
Yes.
Everybody knows what that is.
A, because there are a multitude of examples.
Yeah, they were, yes, we found them. It's not in the, it's not in the area back here.
Oh, it's in 1453. I was going to say.
Yeah, it's in a weird spot.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not on the chart.
But we never found it, did we?
We found it, yeah. We talked.
This one, I remember two.
Oh, because my note said it was missing.
It's like very.
Because I had written, I had my note here that it was missing.
Yeah, but then I think Mike found it, or told us where it was.
Did he?
It's in here somewhere.
All right.
It's like a C-section, a definition.
It is very long, very specific, too. I mean, my God.
It makes you blush, just reading.
I know, it does. I said, geez.
Oh, I guess I, I guess I went back and read it. I can't, I don't.
It's, it's under K.
I must have missed.
What is it?
It's under.
Oh, my cro.
And this one talks about primarily, it's not so much a definition as the requirements about, you know, it's got to be this far away from here, this far away from here.
Well, K4 says adult entertain.
Oh, yeah, that's the part it shall include, right? That's where it says arcades, motion pictures, videocassettes, slides, other things like that.
Oh, I guess we did talk about this. Actually, it's coming back to me.
Right. The definition is lumped in with the other conditions for that use.
So, Mike and I talked about this for a while, and so we said, do we even need to allow this in the CHT district? And so, that was something we wanted to bring back to the planning board and see what everybody thought.
And that was that question that we had had about, you know, can you have prohibited uses in the village, like a cannabis?
No adult entertainment.
Right.
Oh, so you can just say, no, you can't have it at all? Is that against some sort of?
Like a free speech?
Yeah.
I can research.
I don't think there's a lot of talking going on.
You never know, Lisa.
But that, that was the general one for that. We didn't, you know, other than saying, you know, should this be anywhere, does it need to, we didn't have any suggestions about adding it anywhere else.
Yeah, no.
That one was a pretty.
So, I think it's fine. I mean, it is very, the thing gets lost in here because it comes after telecommunications, which is another eight pages long. So, you know, by then you lose interest. So, okay.
And I mean, there are, it is, it's interesting if you go through, there are quite a bit.
I'm wondering if they even, if you adhere to all of this, we have church here, 500 feet arcs.
That's why, I mean, you can restrict it, but you can't prohibit it.
I see.
So, that's probably why there's a vast number of restrictions on it, to limit where it could go.
And there are a vast number of restrictions.
Yes, exactly. I mean, by trying to finish that, there would be like two spots maybe max where it could be allowed, probably.
Right. It's got to be in commercial high-traffic, and it can't be like near anything. So, no, I mean, it's.
It could be at the mall, right?
Put it away from residential.
Right. You could put it at the mall, actually.
Schools, daycares.
Residential.
It might be on the backside.
Because it's on the backside.
Any park or playground, any other adult entertainment businesses, any zoning district other than commercial high-traffic. And then there are some exceptions in here.
It would be really hard to find a spot.
Yeah.
Yep, and then it might not be for sale, so.
Well, and I think that, you know, if you went to, you know, I'll use the mall for an example, do they even want that in there, right? That's a different note, too. That's not just a, that's a.
I think it's covered by.
It's a private, yeah, so.
So, that seems okay even, but.
But so, no change then to that one?
Yeah, no change.
Okay, the next one, alteration to building or improved site. So, we, we didn't have any changes for this one, and we decided, we had said, keep it as is. It should be allowed in all districts.
Special permit conditions?
But this was another one where we.
Special permit. This is just, this is allowed, and this is something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the next line.
He provided on that sheet, you know, hey, can you define alteration for us a little bit, because it's not in there.
I think I defined a definition for this one. So, Mike did send us a whole list of the definition.
There is a definition. Terms defined.
That, it was under terms, though, and he, yeah, so when we were going through, looking for these things, we missed it up in terms. So, that's why he answered it. It's up in terms, yeah.
So, are we going to, we were going to rectify that, right? So that we, if it's in our chart of uses, it's now going to be afterwards in the definitions?
I think that should be the plan, yes. For any time that you see a use in the chart, define it under the chart of uses.
Under 145.
There were a couple of exceptions we were talking about where it made sense to have a, something up in term.
Like the dwellings.
It was the dwelling unit, right. Dwelling unit will be defined up in terms. Dwelling unit is not a use, but as you have a use, you'll have the definition of the use, and when you use the word dwelling unit in the use, definition.
And that will be a term.
It'll reference the term.
Okay, so that's their, so the definition is in terms.
Natalie has a question.
Yeah, I do have a question. There are distinctions between alteration to building that does not result in applicable parking and alteration to building that does result in applicable parking, but there's only one line here.
Oh. What, where, what section are you in now?
So, like, I just started searching alteration. This is in low-density residential permitted use, alteration to building that does not result in changed parking, permitted with special permit, alteration that does result in change of parking. Oh, boy.
And so, I, and I didn't go through these. So, the one thing that I will also note on, maybe it isn't here, maybe I did catch it?
And similarly, the next one.
So, the one, the other note, the other thing that I noticed is everywhere in the current code. It's allowed with some additional conditions. It's not a special permit, except for in commercial high-traffic. That requires a special permit.
Which one?
Alteration.
To building or improved site.
And that was something that, I don't know if we.
No, what is missing?
That's what the current chart of uses says. Maybe not in the definitions, but in the current chart. That's how it's planned.
Yeah, the current chart, yeah. It's, it's X-plus except for CMT.
Except for CMT, yeah. Or is it CMT? Yeah, yeah, the commercial medium-traffic.
Yep.
Here, medium-traffic, it's special permit.
Yep, so commercial medium-traffic should be special permit.
Yeah, or would change to parking, but as a right that does not result in a change to parking.
Oh, okay.
So, we have to create two.
We'd have to have another line here.
Yeah, separate into two lines.
So, this will be a new.
With, with alterations to park, with parking.
Yeah, we can ask. Yeah, well, Mike has. So, that would be an alteration where there is a change to parking versus not.
Correct. So, our next, we'll have an additional line in there?
Well, yeah, we'll let Mike chime in, but, yeah, if that cleans this up the right way, that's right. It's kind of like what you and I, Lisa, were talking about, we're going down to the commercial activities.
Yep.
The, I'll give people a preview. The commercial activities versus, or the temporary commercial activities versus the temporary non-commercial activities, we might want to break those apart, too, because even in the temporary non-commercial activities, there's commercial activities.
That's right.
So, yeah, that, that might be something that kind of breaks apart into an additional, an additional line, too. But back up here, so we can, I'll pass that note along to Mike, and we'll see if we need to revisit this at the next meeting, just to, or if Lorraine, you and I need to, need to talk about that in between now and the next meeting, we can do that?
Okay.
The next one, assisted living facility. We were, Mike and I were questioning LDR and maybe MDR.
Well, you know, maybe we need to discuss this. This gets back to the whole Rob Council situation, because it was just so hard. One of the, either this one, or, no, actually, assisted living is different than special.
Yeah, it wasn't this one.
It is just, it was the special care, but one of us has to, one of these places, or we need a whole new category, is we have to have something that deals with rehabilitation and addiction services.
And we had talked about adding the chart about that.
Yeah, but I was thinking, maybe we need to consider them together. No, assisted living is different.
But so, this one is supportive housing facility designed for those who need extra help in their day-to-day lives but do not require 24-hour skilled nursing. Typically, combine housing, personal care services, light medical care, and an atmosphere of safety and privacy. It talks about, you know, based on a monthly fee, basic services like meals, laundry, housekeeping, recreation, and transportation. Residents typically have a, typically have a private locking room and bathroom, and personal care available on a 24-hour basis. So, there's some, so like Kendall falls into some of those.
I would say Longview. I think there's, I think this is pretty good. I don't think it's outdated.
Yeah, we were just, you know, our, our question was, is that something, right now it's allowed in.
LDR.
It's in low-density residential and high-density residential.
With additional conditions.
With SP-plus, yeah.
Which are permitted upon the determination by the planning board that the design, scale, exterior appearance, project, traffic volume, and pattern, lights and noise level are compatible with the character of the neighborhood or immediate areas surrounding the proposed development.
I don't see a problem with that.
It was interesting, because it seemed to, it seemed as you look, and we looked at those, too, that it would be more like, right, it's different than taking care of somebody in your own house. You know, that doesn't fall into the special permit piece. This is, I want to open up a facility that specifically does this in.
I was going to say, if you look at some of the places in town that I have, for example, the Longview, they have various components, and like, this would not have some of those other components of the continuum of care. This would be like, basically, an apartment building. I mean, the key.
Yeah, no, you're right.
View could be.
It sounds to be like what the Raptor Center said, some of their reserve care. They usually have five or six adults who cannot live on their own. They don't want to live with their family, and they want to be someone.
Independent.
Independent. They, they have like 15 to 20 of these homes now, and they, it's in a residential house. Each resident has their own bedroom, and support comes in and out. It's a very common.
I would say, I don't see a problem with it.
In keeping it in low and medium?
Yeah, no, I don't. I mean, given what Natalie just said, I mean, if the traffic becomes an issue, I mean, I live in a low, you live in a low density. I mean, it would be manageable, I think.
Yeah.
If it is, of course, it's all about managed properly, but.
Isn't that like Horizon Estates, what's in there? Isn't?
Well, they're not really.
They have a piece in there?
That's assisted living. I don't know.
How, didn't Classen buy that? Who bought?
I don't know that. Who bought that? But I, I don't see, if it, again, though, it will be somewhat subjective as to whether it fits in with the character, but I think as society.
After hearing that definition, it was just a bad.
I think that's another instance of the planning board just being more intentional with applying the power of a special permit and the condition.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
They're pretty strict.
And not just rubber stamping that we need.
Yes, I think that's true. And I think it also changes as our society changes, as to how strict those rules might be or not be. We know that we have an aging population, especially even here in the village.
Yeah.
So that where we once were, because the survey showed that, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we're as good as is then, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. The next one is automotive sales services and lots. It's in CHT, and we didn't have any problem with it, and said, okay, as is.
CHT, automotive sales services and lots.
So, that is like new and used car pickup truck sales.
And they weren't interested in having that over at BTD. Okay. Yeah, I don't, didn't want, actually, where, where would there be?
Like Maguire, where Nissan and Chevy are right now, those are.
Car washes.
It's not a deal, but they already be here.
I mean, didn't I even mention, is this the one where I mentioned like Monroe Muffler or Colt? Did I mention that when we were talking about? Because that would be a service, right?
Now, that would be service.
Like over at QG Mall.
Yeah, but that is, I think it's fine, as is.
Yeah. All right, the bank administrative operations, I have to remember that conversation, because that's when the whole ATM thing came up.
It's complicated somehow.
I know.
And that, oh, yeah, so.
So, let's see. Right now, it's in CLT, CMT, BDT, and then we need to know, CLT was with no tellers or ATM, and CMT was with tellers in ATM, but CFCU on Craft Road has an ATM and is in the CLT district.
Yeah, I don't.
Didn't Mike tell us that they got like a, a special permit or something to happen?
It had been before there were changes, before CLT was, yeah. So, right, we didn't have a concern, we were just saying, we were reading through the definitions of it.
It were like the whole no-teller. It were like the whole no teller and.
What's, well, if this is bank administrative, what's a bank?
Yeah.
Um, and those were the differences, it was the tellers, right, and you can have a teller, but that's not the primary function of it, you're not supposed to have an ATM. Go ahead.
Is this one of the changes that's in the proposed local law? To remove the no tel, uh, no ATMs from CLT? I put it in my local law.
We had discussed it, just because this, this one came up, but I don't know if we had a concern about it, it was just a discrepancy that we saw.
Yeah, well, we were both like, oh, is there an ATM? Remember, it was new, there was.
On Google Maps, and it's there, yeah, yep.
I do think I included this as a change in my proposed local law to the Board of Trustees, because it was on the document.
Okay.
That we got from you, from Carolyn and you.
So add, um.
I don't think you would have gotten it from Carolyn and I, because that would just have, oh, well.
BTD?
Um.
I don't just pluck these things out of my noggin.
Because I think that was, I think that was already allowed with a special permit in.
There were just random, some additional ancillary changes included, which I just incorporated, so I wasn't told not to. Let me make sure I'm correct in my recollection.
If it's SP plus in CLT, that means, what were the additional?
No tellers, no ATM.
Where is that defined?
That was.
Because I don't see it under 14558.
No, listen.
Uh, I have to scroll to see what section, I wonder, how would lose it, 14560I?
Yes.
60I?
Yep.
Okay.
Permit in CLT subject to following, no tellers, no ATMs.
I don't have any more to.
Let's step back in the conversation, is the planning board opposed to additional places having ATMs?
I don't think we had talked about it, no, it was.
Um, the traffic partly, it was always whether it was going to have an additional curb cutter traffic thing was the problem.
Because you just have like, for example, a bank in commercial low traffic, do you care if they have an ATM?
So a bank, though, is different than bank administrative operations.
That's the.
We don't have an, we don't have a different operations in CMT.
Bank falls under.
Do you care if they have an ATM?
Not especially.
It's just that we were questioning it because of CFCU on Craft Road.
Yeah, specifically because.
The way it was zoned, and then we found out there was an ATM there, and according to the rules, it shouldn't be there. Shouldn't have been an ATM there.
So if.
But do we care?
Right, that's the thing, I don't, no, that's, I think, especially in commercial low traffic.
Yeah.
Right. And especially the way that the, the code works, right? Mike wouldn't classify a, a bank with multiple, an ATM and multiple tellers and all that stuff, he wouldn't classify that under bank administrative operations anyway. So if you've incorporated that into the local law, that's what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm.
You did, or you're looking?
So we've changed that, ATM is now allowed in CLT. I think that the key here is that bank, a regular old bank, doesn't even come to us, right? It has no special permit or anything. It's just allowed everywhere, right?
Uh, no, it fall.
Where is it?
I think Mike said.
Where is bank?
That it fell under.
Playing old bank?
No, under, um, I want, I want to, it wasn't offhand, I didn't say it wasn't.
I mean, it does say remove someday, but it wasn't on the sheet that I was given.
Yeah, I thought Mike and I had talked about that, actually, that we.
It's on, it's in the BTD Cornell document.
Yeah, Mike and I had said that we should remove that someday, because it didn't seem like a necessary, so nobody's like.
Can I pick something today?
We need to change the local law.
Yeah, I think, uh, sales repair maintenance is where banks fall.
Pardon me? Yeah, exactly. What the heck, I would not, if I wanted to do a bank.
Oh, no, maybe that's something different, maybe that's.
I hope so.
Ooh.
That is just impossible to be.
Sales service.
Small-scale sales or, it's either under, sales repair maintenance.
Sales repair maintenance.
Or small-scale sales.
All retail, soft and hard goods, laundromat, cleaners, bank, bar, tavern, drive-in restaurant, carryout service.
Or small-scale sales, which is a, all retail of soft and hard goods, maximum square footage, some examples, pet store, pharmacy, bank.
What's that?
Laundry mat.
Was one of ours.
So I think that, in, in this case, knowing that it's going to be removed from the local law, um, does that even need to be? Is that just?
It's being, the additional condition for CLT.
Right.
Is being changed to no teller shall be permitted.
Okay.
So just no teller.
Mm-hmm.
So then would that still be?
In fact, that's an.
Special permit plus or special permit?
It's still an additional.
Oh, because that is, so it'll still be SP plus either way for CLT?
Just the condition.
Yep, okay. So then I think that stands, um.
But CMT is with a teller and no ATM? Is that what it is?
You can have, you can have a teller, um.
No, CMT is with teller and ATM.
And ATM.
Okay.
Well, so, for CLT, would, so, I'm assuming the intent to adding those additional conditions was to limit the amount of traffic?
Yep.
I would imagine so.
So wouldn't allowing ATMs only increase the amount of traffic?
Well.
Versus then, would allowing a teller substantially increase the amount of traffic versus allowing an ATM?
I think you would have more traffic with a ATM than you would.
Yes, I do too.
The additional conditions at all.
Well, when we converted, okay, so I do recall someone came and wanted to have a bank where the.
Travel walker, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, yep.
And it was denied because of the ATM and the traffic issue.
Yep.
Now.
That was a few years ago.
But, you know, with light there, if they came in from the other way, it wouldn't matter, really. It, part of it is.
Still isn't a bank, it's a bank administrative office, operation.
Yeah.
Right, the, right, the, the primary use, it's not, you know, primarily, primarily used as a bank, it's like, yes, where like loan services, if you think.
Like, like the Craft Road.
Well, we happen to have an ATM.
I've, I've been there for administrative things, didn't even notice there was an ATM. Probably went from there over to the other place to get some money out of an ATM. I mean, pitiful, but that, I never noticed it there, so if it.
I just, I've never used it, but I know it's there.
I didn't know, I didn't know there was one there.
I didn't, I never noticed it, I walked right by it every time I went in, you know? But.
Do you want to, well, so I guess.
But, I mean, she makes a good point, no, you don't want to increase the traffic is the point.
It's not for me to decide, but there is a meeting on this Thursday.
On it?
On the local law that.
On the local law.
I can move it from the local law, which is something for the trustees to discuss at the business meeting, that Carolyn can relay our.
Okay. About that, Carolyn?
I, I want to be less restrictive personally, that's what I'm going to suggest at, at the business meeting.
Do you think that there's still a need for any additional conditions then?
Or should it just be allowed in commercial low traffic with a special permit, just like?
My personal opinion is that.
It's, I mean, it still says including no more than one teller and one ATM, it's not.
I think that the increase in traffic is maybe substantial.
I can't imagine you'll see ATMs popping up all over the place.
No.
I mean.
If you do, then you won't see a lot of traffic.
All spread out over them, yeah. And right, this is specific to CLT, that chunk of it, not a lot of CLT there. I guess you can let us know what the.
I don't go to the new meetings.
Oh, well, I guess we'll have to get an update on what the, uh.
But if you don't want us to, to, I mean, the, the Board of Trustees, I know, wants to be in concert with the planning board, so people don't want that part of the law, you know, we'll have to redo it, but we should. If you don't have a problem with it, then leave it outside of us.
I mean, I just think it's okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't have a.
I don't have a problem with that, I'm just wondering if there was additional restriction of no teller is anything necessary.
Right, if you're just taking out the ATM piece of it.
We can do this one change, and then we can make another change when we do this.
I mean, when you have a teller, that means they're getting, usually, oh, going inside, oh, is that a drive-up teller?
It doesn't, it's not defined, yeah, it's not defined, it's just a teller.
Just, does you, so you get, you park your car and go in?
So, yeah.
I mean, that doesn't increase the traffic very quickly, I mean, they'd better go in and spend some time and come back out. I think it's fine to have, so basically, yeah, maybe not, it should be fine to have a teller.
But I think most bank administrative operations don't have a teller anyway.
No, they usually don't.
Only their office.
CFU does have a.
Yeah, I was going to say, they have.
Oh, and on Craft Road?
It's not like a, a line of four or five.
It's one teller.
Yeah, it's one.
Oh, I didn't even know that. I haven't been over there in a long time.
I've done other stuff there.
I, you know, it, it's one of those things, it's ancillary, it's there to support right there.
Somebody.
Like, yes, I'm doing loan servicing or mortgage servicing.
While I'm here, I could have.
Need to go and get a cashier's check or something.
Oh, okay.
There, that can do that.
Gotcha, all right.
That's not what they're primarily there for.
Well, then it makes sense. If you're going to have it be administrative operations, there should be a teller and an ATM problem.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it would be lovely to have one-stop shop.
Yeah, right.
So should the additional conditions be removed altogether from CLT?
Just SP?
Okay.
What do you think?
I would say that's probably.
Yeah, it should be the same as CMT.
Just get rid, right, just get rid of, I don't think there's a need to make it unique from medium traffic. It's interesting, it's not allowed in high traffic, but we talked about that.
Okay.
So then, really, the recommendation would, there's the update to local law that needs to happen.
Yes.
But then also, the recommendation from us would be that that's just special permit, not special permit plus.
Yeah.
Because there's no plus.
Yeah, right.
There's just special permit.
So we'll just be omitting.
I'm going to take your plus off, your SP, Mike.
At the next meeting, when we discuss these again, after everyone's had a chance to think about it, yes. I wrote a note, though, no plus.
Oh, two.
Everyone good with that?
I think so.
Again, we'll, we'll get a recap, so that everybody has a, has that. Uh, next one?
The next one is clinic, and so the only thing that we, we were wondering is, why is it an HDR?
Yep. So outpatient health clinic or facility, private or public, which provides medical, surgical, or psychiatric care and treatment for the sick or the injured. Facility may be a group practice in which several physicians work cooperatively, and the facility would not be open on a 24-hour basis, does not include nursing homes or veterinary clinics.
I don't want to think about that yet. Here's the HDR. It's the, um, Beaumont area.
Orange.
Our corn job.
Right, you know, pencil orange kind of color.
Yeah, and I wouldn't.
Fine with it everywhere else.
Also, like Uptown Road too, right?
Yep, all of Uptown, so that this, um, developed area here could be common for that, for example. But other than that, it's all these residential.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to have a facility like that, like on Beaumont, it wouldn't make sense to have a facility like that.
I don't think so either.
That neighborhood.
Although, if it would, oh, no, yes, um, it might make sense to have it here, though.
That's tough.
Oh, is that that property on the, is that?
No, but it's, it's near some, it's, you're starting to, closer to the other health and human services.
Right, if it was like on the Arlio, well, it's not Arlio property anymore, but the Cuba Medical Arlio property, then that would make sense.
Yeah, see, over there, you're starting, as I say, to get closer to.
Yeah, and in the, yeah, in the HHS area.
But, do you want it?
There's available lots of V2 tests, though.
Right, that's the thing, yeah.
Yeah.
And is that lot over there even?
Is that what we would want there?
That'd be.
Was that what we would want there? Because then there's the swim club in it also, but it's the residential on the other side.
And it's also, I think this is, was this an addition with you and Carolyn in the BTT? Let me just look.
Um.
Yes, Carolyn had added BTT.
That was one of the things that it suggested get put into.
See, I think it's better suited there than.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think.
Hi? So, then the recommendation would be to remove, just remove that from HDR?
I would.
Any other comments on that one? Next.
Okay, commercial assembly of soft goods. Um, we were a little bit stumped on this one, because we needed, we needed more examples of what this commercial.
Scientifics and.
Goods is, and what places in the village. So, Mike Scott told us he was unaware of any within the village. In general, it would be like an assembly line for automotives, except for clothes and plastics, et cetera. We, we did talk about this, didn't we talk about this at a meeting last week? Not last time, but maybe the meeting before that?
I don't remember assembly lines.
Feel like he, so the definition would be like jewelry, leather goods, clothing, scientific instruments.
Mike said it would be anything but.
Yeah, I was going to.
Talking about it because of, what's the building down, or the building down here? Didn't there used to be something behind, and, um.
Speak, speak.
I'm trying to think what the name of that, who's in that building? There's a bunch of places in the building right down here on your camera. Right before, it's right before you get to Craft Road, on the right.
Oh, the.
Yeah, Timax is back there, yeah.
Oh, that's where.
They do like point-of-sale cash registration. Oh, they, oh, did you, oh, yeah, there you go. You have enough that they do that.
Oh, okay.
Years ago. But, so, um, one thing Mike said here, though, um, it would be like an assembly line for automotives. Except for clothes.
Oh, except for plastics.
Oh, I, I see.
I don't understand that.
Wait a minute, the definition.
Yeah, I understand.
I understand.
Yeah, now I get it. We were looking at it the same way and didn't make sense, but it does.
Okay, could you explain it to us?
But for.
In a minute, but then.
It's an assembly line for automotives, but for clothes, plastics.
But for.
Yeah.
That's not what this definition says.
That's not what this says.
But he's saying it was like, in a, in an assembly line for automotives, but for clothing.
Yeah.
Basically, it's not automotive.
Oh, I see, except for.
Yeah, the, yeah, so if you look at the definition, um.
It's just an assembly line, period.
For clothing.
But for clothing.
Except for clothing.
And plastics.
And things like that, yeah.
One of the things Mike thought, Mike and I thought, was maybe put it, include it in CMT.
So right now, it's.
Oh, yeah, but that makes.
Just, just in high traffic in business and technology.
Because it used to be, the, the print shop used to, whatever, used to.
But medium traffic might be a good fit for that sort of thing, too.
That's what is CMT. That was, and it was fine. I don't think, as long as, I guess it's more a matter of sound and pollution and noise, sound and smells probably more than anything.
And those we could cover under special permit, general conditions.
So it's in CHT, BTD, and we're suggesting possibly CMT is appropriate, yeah, with special permit.
Any other thoughts or comments about that?
So the next one, commercial crop slash animal is currently in LDR and MDR.
About this, we need to ask.
Farm and craft most new districts.
Yeah, so this one's interesting because this has to do, right, this isn't in, so commercial crop and animal doesn't fall into one of the traditional districts. It's this combined.
Way up north, yep.
So it's really just up there.
Different place.
Yeah, and that also has other, those are the additional conditions that fall on those special permits. So that area up there was carved out some time ago and special conditions were put on it. Or additional conditions and a special permit were put on it.
So now, suggesting MDR as well?
No, it was already in MDR.
Right, it's already in, it's in medium density.
Commercial, oh, yes, sorry.
That one, we, you know, we chatted about it, we just.
So, yeah, we, well, we wanted to know because, we wanted to ask Mike about it because it said, we read, a house needs to be 1,000 feet away. And so Mike told us any stored animal waste or feed cannot be stored within 1,000 feet of a residence that does not have anything to do with a farm, for example, a neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this one, I think we thought ultimately was fine and just generated some discussion about, because it's, it's that, it's a unique district in the village.
Any stored animal waste we cannot be stored in the, not having to do with the farm. We got into something with this, didn't we? Somebody, a little bit up there, somebody wanted to subdivide something.
There.
Or there was something, I can't quite.
It's not where.
Was on the main track.
Yeah, it's not where the event place was, was it? No.
No.
That's.
I'm not going to be able to remember. It was, somebody wanted to subdivide it, and I think this came up as, you know, because they had animals or something, but, I don't know. I'm not going to be able to pull it off. I just remember.
But, so, you know, you know, we read through that and we didn't think there was anything that we necessarily needed to change with that.
So keep as is.
Yeah.
We haven't had any problems.
So the next one, construction, sales, and storage. It's currently in, it's in CHT, and we didn't have any problem with it and thought it was okay as is.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, you know, as, as we read through, and again, you know, keeping, as we've done with the other things, keeping the comp plan and, you know.
Yeah.
Place and trying to really drive things to the right area, we didn't think that it made sense to change that.
The next one, employee cafeteria, food and beverage. We also felt the same way about this one, that it was, it's in CLT, CMT, CHT, BDT, RSH, and HHS. And we thought it was fine.
Yeah, it's employees, I mean, doesn't make sense not to, really.
Government buildings. We were wondering if anyone had any, would have any concerns about having it in AD, ADR, HDR, which, it's in HDR, CLT, CMT, CHT, and BDT, but we were wondering if anybody had any concerns about it being in HDR.
Government building being office, fire station, police station, post office.
Police station, fire station.
Post office or office, government building.
I mean, it's always nice to have a post office in your neighborhood, right?
Got one, got one pretty close to HDR.
I know, right across from it.
The thing is, is how different are, well, a fire station is noisy sometimes.
Good for your multi-residential dwelling.
I was just saying, but, um, I can't, I mean, a government building, how different is that from an industrial building, really? I mean, an office building, it's, I don't know. So we have the sheriff's offices.
Right, so, right, so it's already allowed in HDR. The question is.
Is that appropriate?
Or, no, I think if it, and it's interesting to, like, because you can do a lot of this, would it, more of like a mixed use where you would have, you know, like, yes, here's an apartment, here's a police substation or something like that versus.
Or they live upstairs, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, wait.
A.
Would you have a problem with that? Or would you feel safe? I feel kind of.
Probably a little of both, you know.
I know, I mean, even having the fire station near you, I mean, it's kind of like, feel a little bit safe if you know they're nearby, right? And the post office, I mean, if there was some new community and they decided to put a little post office substation in, who doesn't like that, right?
No, I would say that's.
Convenient.
That's nuts. I mean, the trucks sometimes go out early in the morning. I guess it's more a matter of, is it going to disrupt people sleeping and stuff?
But you, but you get used to those noises. It's kind of like living by the airport, right? I mean, I know that the Delta flight leaves every morning at like 20 of 6. And in the winter time.
Time comes in at around 11:15 at night.
There's that fire station right next to one of the residential.
We've got one right down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, it's just we don't have that many fires, luckily. I mean, when, when you've been, lived near the, in the city where there's near a fire station, it's awful.
Oh, yeah, because the alarm went off all the time, yeah.
I think that's the, that's the point. For the Village of Lansing, a fire station being close by is probably not an issue. There's going to be a noise occasionally, but other parts of the city of Etheka or other cities would be a problem.
I just think maybe, right, that, you know, there's, you know, there are some high residential lots here, and if, if a bigger development came in and put in there, and they wanted to put something in there that, I mean.
I mean, for example, you know, if they wanted to do, go up closer to Route 13 with this uptown parcel and be able to access, I mean, who knows it would be, I guess it's, if it's, it's already allowed.
Yeah, again, we didn't have concerns about it, but looking through, it was just something that we wanted to bring up, so, okay, so no change there.
Were you able to hear the Delta flight from where you are?
Oh, yeah, I can hear them. And usually, and during the wintertime, when it's like very, very cold out, you can hear them start those plane engines up at like.
You heard.
I can hear it in my house.
Really loud. And it's like 10 degrees out and you hear those start up, it sounds.
Hear the planes, the jets.
And building rattles, yeah.
Okay, for the sake of Mike's undertaking.
Yes.
Next, 13, group residential.
Presidential. So we thought this one was okay, too. It's in HDR, and we thought it was fine.
And our definition of group residential, I'd forgotten. This was in.
Club dormitory fraternity or sorority house, rooming house, does not include private or public hospital motel or hotel.
Sorority house, all right.
Maybe we need to relook at this.
No, yeah.
Rooming house sounds like an old-fashioned thing. What is a rooming house?
It, it, it sounds very similar to like a, where like, it's a big house and like, I have my room there and somebody else has their room there, somebody else has their room there. We share a kitchen, there's some bath, so, yeah. It's more of something that you'd see in like, an older house, a town. That hasn't been knocked down and rebuilt into like a.
Dwelling with multiple rooms rented out individually, in which tenants share a kitchen or other often bathroom facilities. That's just from Google.
What about the, what about the club? Did we look that up, the club? Club, it says club. Club.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and the definition it just says.
Club, like, so what kind of club?
So, define club, yeah.
In that club.
I guess a rooming house is.
Residential. I mean, it would insinuate someone's living in the club. Like the wine scè when they used to.
Yeah, the.
They lived there. Yeah, that, I'm going to bring it back.
Everything else, yeah, it's like indoor recreation slash club, outdoor rec- club, health or exercise club.
And the reason we don't have it under, like, CLT is why?
Commercial medium traffic?
Commercial low traffic.
Yeah.
Or CLT. We were just thinking, again, as, you know, right, this is, this is a residential thing. Do we want to drive residential into residential districts or into low-traffic areas? You know, as, as we go through, it's the same, it's that conversation about should we let people build a one-unit house in high-density residential? No, we really want, you know, more dense residential on those lots. And usually, you know, as, as, you know, the definition that Natalie read off, I think of it, right, it is a bigger house.
Yes, it is a bigger.
But it is, it's not like, ah, I don't know if it's fall under high density. I don't know, well, that, again, this is different.
Yeah.
Because this is your.
High density, they each have their own kitchen.
Right, yeah, this is more, yeah.
I, I have a slightly negative feeling about a rooming house, though.
Yeah.
I just, I, I just have.
I was going to say, you almost make it sound like a halfway.
It seems, no, it seems like old-fashioned.
Yes.
Yeah, it might be.
Like, people maybe are taking a job in another city, but they haven't been able to move their family, and so they rent a room till they can move their family. I know my dad did it a couple of times.
Like a boarding house.
Yeah, a boarding, yeah, basically a boarding house.
I don't know why I have sort of a, I don't know.
Or.
Boarding house. It's like, they have a lot of those, like, in college now.
House furnishes meals accordingly.
Oh, 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 really?
That's.
Really? That's back in the day.
It was board. Yes.
But I, maybe this was more common in the 40s or.
I think it's.
Especially with the inclusion of club, it makes.
Yeah, the club part, though, like an old-fashioned.
I'm thinking of the wild west somehow, coming into town, get to.
The club, I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel now about the club part.
I'm scared of residential.
The club. I mean, but a tennis, you know, if it's a tennis, indoor tennis club or indoor.
It's more like a residential, because it's under group residential, so, yeah, it's like a residential.
Or also could have been like, thankfully, it didn't, wasn't in New York, but in Pennsylvania about 15 years ago, all these people came in from Texas and wherever for, for the frat, drilling the fracking wells. And I think, you know, they rent a. Of course, that's, that's a use we'd maybe rather not see.
Be coming back.
But, you know, for, you know, professionals or people on temporary assignment with, say, a one-year contract with Cornell, and they aren't going to move their family.
Makes sense.
But, so, this one, you know, we, we thought it was okay where it was.
I don't know where else you'd put it.
That was, and we had that discussion about it, you know, as you, as you look at some. I don't think you want it in, you know, low-density residential, you know, if you think about a frat or sorority.
Oh, no, I, no, we don't. I don't want that next door.
We want, as somebody who lives in a high-density residential area, do we want those things even in HDR? A fraternity or a sorority.
Well, so this is, right, this would be different, though, because like, like Natalie said, like, you have your own, right, you have your room and your, you know, kitchen and your, this is more of like a shared, but I guess they could.
I also think, logistically speaking, in the Village of Lansing, you're not going to get a fraternity or sorority house here.
Yeah, as a practical map.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and is plain special permit the right thing? Or do we feel that we would, well, we'd have to come up with conditions, so.
Maybe we should put a plus on.
But then we have to.
Additional conditions.
Now, what would we want? No vagrants. I mean, what, I don't know.
You know, but, again, trying not to be too restrictive. I mean, it already is by saying, hey, you can have this in HDR and that's it. And again, practically in the village.
Yeah.
Well, as it is.
Number of people.
And as it is, if we look at our general conditions, we would be able to, I would hope, as you said when we first started, the most important thing is to be very strict with applying our special permit and being really adhered to that.
I'm, I'm fine with.
I am, too.
Yeah, let's let it go.
Okay, so here's what I, okay, high-traffic food and beverage.
High-traffic.
So we, I think we talked a lot about this, what, last?
Yes.
Yeah, but I, I had some thought about this.
Okay.
Because one of the things that struck me the last time was, okay, so we talked about putting it into CMT, right? And we were all pretty receptive to that concept, given our situation. The thing that I liked that Natalie came across in the manliest definition of their, in their code was only, was it one? And so Carolyn, this is something you're going to.
So in their commerc, this was in their PUD, but also in the Commercial 1 district, with a special permit, they have drive-through use, there shall be no more than one drive-through use permitted on any single parcel within Commercial 1. I don't know how that equates to commercial medium.
Well, commercial medium wasn't intended ever to have drive-through, so we've now suggested that it maybe should have some drive-through. But I'm sort of thinking, maybe it would be SP plus, in that we don't want, like, three drive-through there.
More than two or something.
Or something.
I did bring this up to Mike Scott.
Yes?
He said that that parcel, the size of it.
Yes.
You could easily subdivide it.
Okay, so then.
And so then you could get one on each parcel.
But they'd have to subdivide it.
Mm-hmm. But you're, you're making a judgment on subdivision, not the intended use on the subdivision after the fact.
Right.
So you couldn't deny the.
Fast food restaurant.
Because you think they're going to put fast food restaurants on it.
So if they put three on that particular parcel, but nobody subdivides the parcels first, then would the setbacks, are they still put in? Able to put three drive-throughs?
He seemed to think so, yeah.
And buildings?
Mike seemed to think so.
Yes.
Norwegian cuisines or whatever you want to call them.
Yes.
That you could, you could subdivide that to a size.
That whole big lot there, right, if.
Could have three drive-throughs.
Oh, wow.
I mean.
You know, it's current state.
I specifically asked Mike about this, as making an additional condition.
It depends on what you're doing, right? If you look at the coffee places up in Cortland that are just drive-through, there's no inside, it's a small building.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, like that one, uh, coffee menu.
The parking requirements are different for it. It's a small building. The setbacks aren't, won't impact it much.
Are you talking about both sides or just this side right here? This means that the.
No, no. No, you're talking about the whole thing.
Yeah.
You're talking about this whole.
It's the, this is, this is all.
Oh, that could have.
That's one thing, so there's three, you're on that line. Oh, okay, okay, okay. I thought you just meant this part right here. I was like, how?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, no.
Okay.
My problem is, is that I, everything I'm reading is times are changing and people are, tastes are changing and people are not going to fast food places and they're all struggling and I, I'm just, people are looking for something unique. So some of this is going to be changing and I'm just, oh, I just can't see that. I, I guess I hope that we're not just a waystation in and out, where people come and drive through and grab their food and leave. Wouldn't it be nice if they actually came and sat down and had a meal?
Yeah, I mean, you could, so Mike said, I specifically said, what about limiting a certain number?
Yep, yep.
He said, when looking at the dimension requirements for CMT, it wouldn't take much to subdivide that parcel into several smaller, smaller parcels as long as they met setbacks. So if you want him to try to figure out meeting setbacks, how many parcels could they?
Right, would you be able to meet setbacks with?
I guess, I would. I, I guess I really would like to not have, the first thing you see when you come into village is a strip mall with three drive-throughs. I just, you know, this whole buildings with no peaks on the roofs and the whole bit, it just, it, well, I don't know. It's just, no, I didn't think we were hoping for that. Hoping for mixed use more so. They're something, have a drive-through in the bottom, but I'd like to see something upstairs, you know?
So, right now, though, this one is allowed in commercial high-traffic. And prior to other discussions, we didn't have, you know, a, oh, well, should we, you know, should we add it here, too? But now there's been a discussion about adding it to CMT, and would that be?
And, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, I guess I would like to know from Mike, because honestly, maybe I would then prefer to have a developer go for a variance.
Well, a, a use variance or an area variance? Do you gain an area variance?
It would be an area variance.
If they're not going to meet their setbacks.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about just if they wanted to go and they drive through next month or something.
For it to be possible to get a use variance.
Yeah, you have to prove hardship and it's just, right now, it's.
That it's not self-inflicted hardship and you bought a property where you know you can't do something.
Yeah, okay.
So is it automatic? No.
Okay.
I like the idea of doing a special permit with additional conditions, and one of those conditions is no more than two drive-throughs.
Yeah, that's what I was coming up with, because I'm not opposed to it, I just want a slew of them. But I don't know if that's going to protect it.
This is in the local law that's going to be heard on Thursday.
I'm not going to be here.
Do we want to put a hold on that? Do we want to take it out and just push the BTD, HHS? I just know that this is in that local law that was drafted, where it just be straight special permit.
I guess I.
Special permit always has conditions.
Oh.
This would be an additional condition in the code.
That is not in the.
That is across all, you know, special permits in CMT. So doesn't run the risk of being forgotten, or we just, you know.
The thing is, you don't want people to come with the impression that they can do something. You want, if it's in the code, know upfront. Okay, if I buy this property, I can only have one drive-through versus having to subdivide and all that. I mean, you, it, if it's something we feel strongly about, you put it in the code so that people know what they're getting before they even buy it, you know what I'm saying? And, yeah, you can always go for a variance of some sort, but some of it's impossible, and it's time-consuming and all of that, so I've just, it was bothering me, and I don't, you know, it's just me thinking this through, it's not the whole.
Well, it came up.
But I, I am, I'm worried because we, we struggled so with CMT, period, making it the transitional thing coming into town, that I think, are we opening Pandora's box here? Because CMT goes over here, too, you know, and it's like, I don't know. It just, I feel like maybe we're rushing this, trying to be accommodating. And, yeah, we've got, we've got some real bad, derelict properties in our village at this point that we can't seem to do a whole lot with, which is something else I think we've got to really figure out. But I don't want to rush this and I really just feel uneasy about it. And whenever I feel uneasy about something and it continues to make me feel uneasy, I like to take a step back and think it through a little slower. And I feel like we're rushing it personally, but.
See, I think, I think it's a good compromise, I, I think it's a good compromise with saying something along the lines of no more than two, or no, I mean, no more.
Whether it's one or two.
Yeah, whether it's one or two, but, I mean, if it's, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, because I think that that accomplishes the goal of opening up potential things there and protecting the village still and getting rid of, you know, not just there, not that we have a lot in other places, too, but, you know, derelict buildings about.
Well, over the, the whole Sheraton thing, too, could possibly be, you know, I mean, I just.
And that's how, that's.
Well, that's the height, CHT, so that doesn't, but I just really want to be more careful with the CMT thing, that's all.
Well, and that's why I think putting that additional condition on there is.
Appropriate.
Yeah. It's adding a very specific use, right? It's not like, right, it's, it's the opposite of us saying, oh, should we, you know, change, you know, should we add it to a bunch of places? No, it's a very specific use in a very specific district, and here are these additional conditions.
I mean, the fact that it is not currently allowed at all.
Right.
I know that we discussed it last time and suggested that this, we would be receptive to this, but, and I don't know if that changes something for, for a developer to know that, but I just, this would be how I would like to proceed personally. I think it would be like you just said.
So Carolyn, as our liaison, do you want to bring all of this to the Board of Trustees on Thursday and discuss the planning board's concerns with the CMT change? Or me to circulate, like, an email, or Mike Baker, do you want to send an email to the board tomorrow to say?
Absolutely willing to do that. Like I said before, the Board of Trustees wants to move a lockstep with the Planning Board and they were really happy that we wanted to make the change because I understand that we're, here's the thing, we're, we're looking at something we know is an eyesore versus something that maybe is gonna get out of control. And the position that I feel is if we can get rid of a known eyesore, that's more important than something that maybe will be, get away from us a little bit and we might have to make another change. And if, it turns out that this was, this could turn out to be great, it could be, turn out to be a mistake and we, you know, it's hard to know. We just make the best decision we have with the information we have. But what we know right now is that we have a couple of eyesores around the village that are really detrimentally impacting the whole character of this, of this commercial area. And I can see something vibrant there and, and busy being great, even if it is also a drive-through, which is traditionally less favorable. So I wanna think it through, but when you guys said you wanted to make the code change, we were like, perfect. That sounds exactly what we need right now to not lose this opportunity, but also not be making, you know, huge changes quickly. Now, one of the things you and I talked about, which I'm gonna do, is go to, tonight, I have a list of the things that I wanna research. And one of them is I wanna talk to a lot of people about how they, how they came up with the dimensions for their PDA and why. And definitely consider that, but like you said, Lisa, take our time with that because if we change that
Yeah.
and then it turns out to bite us, that could be even worse. Now, we don't know, we don't know what this developer will do, what kind of person they are, what kind of design they like, but we have a special permit process. And so there is always some amount of control given by the Planning Board. And without that amount of control, I'd be like, yeah, no, it's too risky. But with you guys always having a special permit in front of you, you'll see what, you'll see what their plans are.
Yeah, I, I think though, so I, I like the idea of putting additional conditions on it. Just any, any of those things in that quarter, we've talked a lot about protecting the border. So I'm fine with adding commercial or, uh, high-traffic food and beverage into commercial medium traffic, but I would wanna put, you know, that condition on there that there's no more than, the trustees can pick a number.
You can pick a number.
Now, we should pick and recommend a number.
I, you know, I, I want one more than two.
I would.
No, I'm, I'm with you on that because we don't need two drive-throughs next to each other unless, but unless of the case of.
Well, they can share.
If it is like a coffee mania that's over in Cortland, which is just like the size of an outhouse, right? But it's just drive-through, which would be something totally different than a fast food place on the corner.
Yep.
But then again, what if it's a Dunkin' Donuts? Do you really want a Dunkin' Donuts next, you know, that's like.
AFC and whatever.
Right, I mean.
When I grew up, we had this thing called Burn, not Burn, yeah.
I was gonna say.
What was it? Dairy bar, dairy bar. And it was drive-through, milk and eggs. It was all over Long Island. And when I first had my kids, I used to dream, what if I could just stop for milk and eggs and Dunkin' Donuts? And I really wish, but what happened on Long Island, which I don't think's gonna happen here, is that they became a subject of robberies.
Yeah, those quickie, you know, actually all those quickie, we had Cumberland Farms in Massachusetts.
Was it similar?
Well, it was a gas station and a Quickmark, you know, only it was not like the one right down here by mobile. It was really, you could pretty much get, make your groceries there pretty well. But, yeah, but those were the places that always, the 7-Elevens, they all get, those are the places that get held up a lot.
And then when the bakery became a coffee shop, I went there for coffee all the time when my kid didn't get out of the car because I could sleep and get in the car. I'd be like, oh, I'll just stop, stop for coffee. And so I don't have that negative connotation with just a drive-through because I grew up with it.
Yeah.
And it's super convenient and I loved it for 10 years when I couldn't get out of the car. So I, that's how I view them.
I think it's because, for me, it bothers me because it's on that corner and it's, it's gonna be kind of an eyesore to see more than one drive-through.
I think it's right on the corridor. I think that we, as a village, and we've had this discussion here with us and other people and in the survey, right, we're not just looking for, oh, somebody please come in and save us and install, you know, 50 drive-throughs, that's what we need. I think we wanna mix of stuff, just like we have a mix of residential. I think we wanna mix of, you know, high-traffic food and beverage and that mixes for years, you know, this goes back to even the mall with the out-parcels and, you know, the potential for some restaurants on out-parcels there and it was received well and it just never happened. And so I think there's an opportunity here, given, you know, what has, you know, discussions that have had and informal presentations that have happened here and balancing that with, again, protecting that corridor and making it look, you know.
Nice.
Well, I think it's.
Making it nice in the village.
I think it's a reasonable opening up of the strict thing that we have personally, without getting too far afield. But, and I don't care if it's too, but I, I, I would like, I've just been thinking about this a lot and I think, I don't know.
So at the trust, or at the trustee, at the last Planning Board meeting we had, we just kinda did an informal, like, you know, vote and said, yes, this is something that we should let the trustees know that, yeah, you know, we're, we're open to this with the expectation that tonight we would say, well, if we have stuff packaged up to send you, that would be great. But in lieu of that, you know, can we make this recommendation to the trustees? And I don't think, obviously, we're far enough along to package up a ton of stuff to send to them, so.
They're anxious to do this, to move this along.
Yeah.
But as I've always said too, is every time we get anxious to do something, we have made some kind of decisions
Well, I think that.
that I think we've all regretted later.
Well, I think we can give the trustees.
But I, you know.
A recommendation and then also a recommendation for some additional conditions. And if they want to discuss that, if, if they say, yes, this is good, we're comfortable with this, or no, let's make it this instead, or no, let's go back and talk to the Planning Board more about this, obviously, they'll do that.
I just think when, when you read that one to us last time from Manly's, it just, wow, that makes sense. We're not the only people that are grappling with this.
Yeah.
And they've come up, and they're a, a nice community.
Mm-hmm.
And they're kind of, and I think, didn't the chat tell you?
Chat said that we're a can.
Okay, yes, basically the most like us. So it seemed like a good thing to do and it's been, so that would be what I would like, I think.
What's that, so?
Two, SP plus.
SP plus, okay, and limit the number?
Yeah.
And I would say, I would be fine with two. I think one might be a bit.
Restrictive.
Restrictive, you know.
Yeah.
But I think.
I think two should be more than enough.
I think two should be more than enough.
Yeah.
So in that case then, for, you know, at least up for discussions, making that an SP plus, but in the interim, I guess we can cover that under other business if we wanna make a recommendation to the trustees for.
So we would change our, do we change, what, what do we change? We change the definition of high-traffic food and beverage?
No, so we would add.
It would be added under.
CMT as an SP plus and then plus.
Sixty, section sixty, we would just add another.
Oh, we added the sixty.
There would be general, there would be additional conditions for high-traffic food and beverage and commercial medium traffic.
Yeah, okay, so.
Commercial high-traffic won't change at all.
So that, no, so that's where we added, is in the 145, sixty.
Sixty. And so let's circle, would you, and we'll circle back around to this.
It was at 158.
It's 160.
Oh, yeah, the other one's X.
Section R.
It would be R?
Unless there's already a high-traffic food and beverage section.
I don't think there would be under there because there's, there's no additional conditions. But so let's circle back around to this to see if we do wanna make a recommendation to the trustees for their future. If we did that tonight, Natalie, would that give you enough time to, just for their discussion?
They're gonna have to make that change.
Okay, oh, right, right, okay. Next then?
Home occupation.
Home occupation.
Home occupation. Let's see, I'm trying to remember what we. Do you think that was a reasonable thing to do?
Mike, I don't, I made a decision about this one. I know we talked about, we were asking Mike Scott about what the mall's primary use identified as and he said the mall themselves are not classified, the individual uses within the mall are. But I don't think you and I made a decision about the home occupation.
Yeah, this one.
What's the problem? In which district? What level?
I think this, I think what came up around this one is it's home occupation and that's great for low-density residential and medium and high-density residential. But does it make sense to have home occupation, again, especially considering the fact that we've been removing like residential from CLT? Does it make sense to have a home occupation in a commercial district? In a commercial district, you.
Rent an office.
Rent an office, have a small sale service, things like that, that's.
Oh, yeah, what did we decide on mixed use?
Mixed use is everywhere.
Yeah.
So that would be a mixed use?
Mm-hmm.
Mixed use is in, um, commercial.
Almost every district, yeah.
So the def.
Commercial.
One, we're adding it to BTD, Patricia.
Yes.
So the definition, that's kinda, home kinda. Use, so what if they're in apartment building?
That would be residential.
If they're in an apartment building that is in one of the others.
A mixed use.
Then it becomes mixed use if it's in a commercial high-traffic or whatever apartment building. However, permissions should not be considered a home in their name. Okay, oh, yeah, this was it where.
Home occupation right now.
What?
What are the restrictions?
Correct.
Oh, it's actually, you gotta look at the.
Oh, this is one where the special permit conditions weren't, weren't lettered correctly.
Yeah.
This is one of the ones that we talked about many years ago.
Oh, yeah, in your neighborhood, yeah.
Because everybody had, like, we don't want people working from home to have to get a special permit to work from home. They're gonna be like, are you crazy?
But they, you also don't want, so there's people that have counseling services in their home, piano teachers, those kind of things.
Someone who did.
Yes.
Well, piano teachers, actually, that's.
But there was somebody though in Shannon Park that did. Because I suppose it could be noisy.
You're, you're in the, I'm sorry, now.
The definition?
Restrictions are.
Let's see. Shall not be considered home occupation and therefore shall not be subject to special permit under the zone law in the event that, one, there are no employees, right? So if, if you're using it for, like, if I'm just working from home, that's not a special permit.
Okay, good.
That's not, there's no employees, there's me, I'm me working from.
14560C are the additional restrictions.
And just so you know, they weren't lettered correctly. I could tell.
Oh, you have no idea, I have so many.
Um, 14560D is not, it's 14560C.
Just said.
Yeah.
What you just said?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
D.
C.
Okay.
Home occupation.
That's what it is in the code.
Yeah.
Oh.
Or does it say D?
Oh, we found it. Remember Mike, we found it, it was D.
D?
And we're like.
It's got like, commercial crop and animal.
It's a reference, internal reference, it's wrong. I bet that's it.
Yeah, this is the one that basically pretty much tells you what you can't do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it shouldn't be then in the commercial ones. It doesn't make sense, does it?
That was kind of our, that was kind of.
Not if mixed use covers it.
Right, mixed use covers it in.
But mixed use covers commercial and residential, so within the residential side of mixed use, are you allowing someone to have an occupation out of their home?
Yes, why not?
Then you should allow this in.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's gonna be the individual homeowner or apartment owner that's coming to you for the special permit, not the developer that created the mixed-use development.
Right. And provided all of these conditions are met, which are a lot.
Yeah.
Noise, smell.
That makes sense when you explain it right, that.
Yeah.
Right, because it's the same thing, right, you're not gonna have a residence in commercial high-traffic unless it's in.
An apartment building, yeah.
Mixed use, so, okay.
So it's okay to keep.
So in that case, it would be fine the way it is. And with the additional conditions, right? That way you're not saying, I'm working from home, that's a home occupation, you know, I don't need a special permit, I'm not, yeah.
Does that make sense?
If you have a person, they don't need a permit.
Right.
But if the person hires one additional person, then they need a permit?
I think they do. They can't have employees.
So once you have employees, then you need, then you need a permit.
Uh, no, stay, um.
That's why.
There's a lot of conditions, yeah.
It's in there.
Where is the employer part, the definition?
It's under the definition, one, there are no employees. Oh, there's editors, no, no.
So what comes to mind for me is like, you see this a lot online, like at-home nail techs.
Nail techs?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, this, but the fumes.
But they have a lot of, I mean, it might not permeate outside the home.
But if it does.
Well, then they're in violation, but I'm just saying, that is something that a lot of people do at home.
And hair cutting and stuff too.
Hair cutting.
Oh, my God, that's, when you, the nail people used to be in the mall, quit walking, you immediately have a headache, it's awful, so.
Do you guys remember when Julie Stone came?
I certainly do.
She wanted to have a nail salon in her house, not a, here's her, not a nail salon, in her house.
Hair salon. Did not go over well.
No, and people thought it was like a business, too much coming and going. And she has a lot of, she does have employees.
She's on the comments, yeah.
Yeah, she wanted to, she had a, she wanted to spend more time at home with the kids, I think. And it, yeah, no, but the neighborhood was not in favor of it.
So then.
Just leave it as is?
As is, the way it is.
Because it is SP plus with a lot of the conditions, all of which are outlined.
Any other comments on that? Okay, hospital?
So the next one is hospital and I think Mike and I thought CHT and HHS were fine. But I did have a note on here regarding the alcoholism, the Alcoholism Council building, that is in CLT.
CM.
CL.
That's in.
Isn't it CM?
I think I wrote down CL, but.
So CDT.
Am I wrong?
It's, it's in here, it's, it's this building right here, which is commercial medium.
So it's medium.
Oh, so I had, oh.
Either way, though.
Sorry, I had written CLT, is CMT?
Yeah.
Oh, typo, okay.
It's CDT.
I don't know, it's another typo apparently.
So what's that supposed to be, CHT?
I don't know.
CMT and so is CLT. And that was not classified as hospital?
No.
No.
No, because that had, they got a variance, it didn't, we couldn't classify it anywhere, that was the problem.
Classified to something. I think, I think they got a variance to classify.
I don't know that they got a variance, I think the BZI did an interpretation.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
They, they had to, we, we did not have anything that we could, had to go for a variance.
But this is the. Right, this is the note though that we had on the bottom where we said, maybe we need to create a new use that is like addiction services or whatever.
Or rehab.
Rehab, whatever.
And I had a typo and I have that D, is that supposed to be M, CMT?
Oh, yeah, I was like, what's CDT?
I know, I was trying to figure that.
That's super important, Mike, I really think that we should do that, decide what zones you want recovery services to be and specify it in the code. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, especially because you know what.
I know, I think that's a great idea.
This could come up, this.
Absolutely, yeah.
In the next year.
We had also chatted about, well, we had chatted about, you know, if we do come up with a new use that is specific for these things, what does that do to places that are already, you know, actually classified that way?
Grandfather, yeah.
It depends.
Yeah, it happens.
Depends on if they're operating or not.
Right.
And this new comes into effect, so, and then we'd also have to go back and see what that does, the BZA interpretation of that has any bearing on that. But either way, yes, the, there was a, a thought that maybe, you know, we've got like clinic and we've got hospital and we've got testing lab and we've got this other thing, where do these fall? It was up, I mean, it was up for, up for interpretation last time and it was a gray area for Mike to try to figure out and there was a lot of discussion here and there was a lot of discussion at the trustees and ultimately the BZA had to do an interpretation of it. Maybe that rises to the occasion that we should have a use for that in the village so that it's not discussed by all three boards, you know, right? It's, okay, here's this thing, if it's there, great. I think that's just better off for everybody.
I think when we looked, Jonathan and I looked at the, we had special care facility. It might even fit to add just rehabilitation services in there of some way, but then with those, would it be in the areas you'd want it to be? So that's what we have to look for.
Yeah, and we can figure that out, and it might actually clean up some of the other things, too, right? It might help clean up clinic, hospital, you know, pick, there might be some pieces of there that fall into these things to make it, um, just cleaner for anybody who wants to do that sort of thing, whether it's a clinic or a hospital or a rehabilitation service or whatever it is.
So hospital, are we curing things?
Uh, hospital, we didn't have, um, any-
Surgical, psychiatry, treatment for the sick or injured.
Yeah, we didn't have any, um, recommended changes for that. I think high-traffic, obviously, HHS, it didn't fall into, um, research or business and technology, so.
Okay, so basically as is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other comments on any of that? So again, while I ask a question, any other comments on any of that, questions?
No, nicely done, you guys. Nice write-up here, haven't done anything.
We have all those notes, so it's, it's the same information on the sheet, we're just gonna do-
Yeah, I know, but I haven't put it in a nice-
So-
Format like Lorraine, you know.
We can discondense the recommended changes, just like we did, um, when Yumila and Jim presented, we'll give those into, you know, a nice, concise little form for the next meeting. Um, we'll just, those there, entering them into the chart, and then, um, we'll also get some information from Mike about if we need to have a, um, you know, that alteration to building or improved site for part, changes in parking versus no changes in parking, potentially a-
Oh, yeah, that's-
Services, we can come up with whatever, whatever name we want to, um, but we'll talk about those at the next meeting, and then after that, um, Lisa and I will do, um, the first one that Jonathan started, and then her and I finished.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee report.
There's someone, because it was canceled, Labor Day.
Trustee, I'm fine with it.
And then, uh-
Well, they are having a meeting on the 15th.
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
Um-
Off the hook.
So the next item on the agenda after that is other business, so the one thing that I wanted to bring up, um, before we go around is, kind of back to the adding, uh, high-traffic food and beverage to commercial, medium traffic, do we want to make a recommendation to the trustees that, um, yes, we add that as a special permit with additional conditions, and those additional conditions being no more than two-
On a single-
-test food places on a single parcel?
I would like to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jim?
I think conceptionally, thinking about it intellectually, it sounds fine, but I'm also picturing a Burger King and a Wendy's right next to each other.
It's still hard, isn't it?
Which is not as appetizing.
Yeah.
No, no pun intended.
I didn't pick up on that. Um, so I think, so, so, I agree with you entirely, I will be the first one to say that I don't want that strip turning into downtown Ithaca. And not that there's anything wrong with downtown Ithaca, it's just an entirely different, you know, vibe up here.
Got a McDonald's.
Um, but I think that we have a lot of tools at our disposal with pre-laws and special permits and general conditions and things like that, and other guidelines that we have in the village that we have maybe just not known about and enforced or have been, um, not as aggressive on enforcing, and I think that if we do, again, want to allow things but make it look as nice and incorporate it into the village as possible, then as the planning board, that's what we push for when any development comes forward from here on.
But it seems like-
Cause I agree with you, I don't want to stay, hey, look, here's a cookie cutter McDonald's next to a, or a-
Yeah.
Burger King next to a cookie cutter Wendy's right there on the, you know, the same sort of thing facing down, I don't want that.
No.
But then, then you get into architectural aesthetics, which I don't know how much there is in the village, but, you know, just in some other parts of the country, I've seen, I've seen a subway that's actually a really attractive building in West Virginia of all places, um, or Northern Virginia, there's a lot of, or parts of New England.
Yep.
You know, the-
Yeah, we've, we've taken all, yeah.
Yeah, the usual suspects, and they're very, even the McDonald's down on the strip isn't bad, just looks like a tire store, but-
Yeah.
You know, one of the things I have my eye on, after the comprehensive plan is finished, is updating the design guidelines for the village. And, yeah, something that would create something like what you're visioning is definitely the end goal. If we get there, I don't know, but even if we get halfway there, it'll solve a lot of our problems.
Cause there are design guidelines, they're outdated.
Your guidelines.
Yes.
But we want a standards, you and I worked on that way back when, we started to, yes.
That really turned our focus to that. Yes, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if, but, yeah, and unless it is in the code, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
Because people, but again, if people know what you want upfront, they make a decision whether they want to come here or not, but they may, the right fit, there is always another partner that will be the right fit. I don't know.
But even with all the, you know, you mentioned getting the conditions and everything in, I mean, it seems like you could still get a Burger King and Wendy's.
Yes, oh, so are you saying the number two, one too many?
What's that?
Are you saying that two-
No, I, I, I'm wrestling with it, because conceptually, two sounds fine, but-
I, I agree.
You got two, two entities that are, you know, relatively attractive and not bad, or you get, you know, Burger King and Wendy's. And I picked them because we are-
I don't think we are gonna get Burger King and Wendy's, though, because they're not doing so well.
You never know.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I mean, I don't know.
But I think we tr, I think-
We try.
Yes, we try. And, um, we take advantage of, like, the tree law and things like that as people come in and want to do developments, I think that that can help, you know, at least buffer some of that from-
Yeah.
And, and I-
And sidewalks, I mean, by the time you get some of this in, which are, these things are in our code, some of it will be self-solving.
Yes, I think so.
And I'm noticing, like, down on the strip where the, um, I'm trying to, well, it used to be Mo's was at one end, I'm trying to remember, oh, yeah, I guess by, by Walmart, with the trees, they're getting bigger, it's actually, I was down there, I don't know, about two weeks, I was seeing, this is actually starting to not look good.
Takes a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, there was, I had three things.
But conceptually, I'm not opposed to, but I'm just throwing up my thoughts.
Hopefully, that won't happen, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully, a lot of things will.
Well, that's what we push for, and-
The buildings can be built charming, I mean, our Taco Bell friends are doing that up in Syracuse where they're-
It's an old fire station.
Doesn't even look like a Taco Bell, right?
Yeah, it's a fire station, it kept the, you know, the doors and the big, it was in there, it looks like a brick fire station, and it says Taco Bell.
Yeah.
It looks a lot better than, not that I think, well, this one, again, this one, I think where, location is, um, you know, tucked away, I think that, it, this, I won't call it an eyesore, um-
No, but it's the regular standard cookie cutter Taco Bells, but-
But the fire station, which you just described, that sounds really nice.
Yep, there's a McDonald's main that, you know, blends right in with the character of the village, which is, I don't know how old.
So it can, can be done.
The general conditions of the special permit is that the general environmental quality of the proposal in terms of site planning, architectural design and landscaping is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. So in doing this, you're creating the character of the neighborhood in which you're trying to get things to either fit or not fit into. So what is the character of this neighborhood to say no to, to drive-throughs?
Yep.
Well, actually, no drive-throughs at the moment.
But we're allowing it now, we're gonna allow, so we can't use that.
And meanwhile, I think they'll be upset about that, Charles, but I would say that some of the buildings that are around that area, none of them are just these concrete, flat buildings, they actually have roofs and things-
Yeah.
That hide the mechanicals, and I would argue that.
McDonald's right next door.
But?
What about McDonald's right next door?
Well, but you're, Lisa's talking about us's street.
Side of that very, one of the few, I think, attractive buildings on North Strip Hammer, which is, I don't even know what they are, right on the-
The Orthodontist.
Yeah.
And then you've got Northeast Pete's next door, right?
Yeah, and across the way is Colonial, um, what's its name?
Right, so there you go, right, so that's that, that's that characteristic that you want to continue on with a new development that's being-
And even, um, the Orthodontist, you know, what's his name, Bonneville, has, is a building that has a peaked roof, and then you get to this next door. So that-
Speaking of counterargument, that there's a character of the neighborhood.
I know.
I actually think that is the planning board, the ton of power in this circumstance because of the varied character. You can say, the character is this, and you can say, the character is this.
But, but there really are, um-
National argument that the character is Colonial, that would be a great way to start the conversation.
I think it is more, actually, this end is more like that, and-
I agree.
Have our Village Office here, too.
Oh, right.
So I think we have-
And this goes back to, it's, we have, this goes back to, right, at some point, we're gonna have things in the code, standards.
And at some-
Right now, we don't have them, right now is the time for us to start trying and pushing until we have them.
And what have I said?
And then, you, then you already have this built-up sort of character that goes along with whatever standards we-
Pretty soon, that, that becomes the character, but-
We gotta start.
I have said all along that we have not been strong enough with all of these things. We are so eager to make it, but no, this is what we want, and we need to hold our convictions strong.
Yep. Okay, well, with that, um, I would entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the trustees that they add commercial, high-traffic into commercial, medium, or commerc, high-traffic food and beverage, excuse me, into commercial, medium traffic as a special per, as a special permit with additional conditions that we discussed, no more than two drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs in a single parcel. I make that move, what?
But then you get there, you said, no more than two drive-throughs, and the other conditions that we discussed.
No, that was the condition that we discussed, if there's, yeah, that was it.
What are the other ones, and if there are other ones, we should enumerate them.
That's it.
No, that's the main one, I mean, others are just part of our standard.
And the trustees can discuss and test, and they might have some good suggestions about things that they want to see in their, um, if there were additional conditions.
Just wanna be clear what, what we're proposing.
That's the main thing, yeah.
Okay, no more than two drive-throughs per parcel.
Yes.
Is that what the man Lisa's one said?
I'm looking up man, man.
Okay.
Wait, per parcel?
Yep, and that's one big parcel there.
Yeah, but there was earlier discussion about how it could be subdivided.
But-
And then, then that, that two turns into four.
And then if they want to be like, how, how we can subdivide, then okay, but so start with just one.
But there's three parcels over there, right?
There's the possibility, there's only one parcel, one at the moment.
We don't, Mike Scott just said it would be easy enough to subdivide if they can meet the setbacks, we don't know in-
How many?
How many they could fit on.
I always start with one.
Fine.
Yeah, because if you think about it, if there were other parcels over there and you have up to two drive-throughs, I mean, you could end up with four drive-throughs over there.
And then also, if they have to simplify another step, it's more time for us to put our input.
I also think it gives the intent of the village, like, we're allowing this, but we really don't want to see an abundance of it.
That's, okay.
I was gonna try to, in variance for that, too.
I move that we recommend to the trustees to allow high-traffic food and beverage to CMT with a SP plus, the additional condition being that there be no more than one drive-through per parcel.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Lorraine.
That's even better than I thought before.
All in favor?
Thank you. Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Okay.
Terrific.
Thank you.
That feels right.
That does feel good, there you go.
I feel better about that.
Um, and again, I think there might be more input from the trustees on it, and again, especially with it potentially, you know, being written that way, they could always go get a variance, they say, oh, well, we really want to go get a variance.
I was, even though I've, I've-
Or a subdivision, and, well, I'll see what you can do.
In a area, yeah.
I think when people really want to be here, um, they make it work, I mean, we, a couple of things in that regard.
Okay, that was the one item I had for other business, Lorraine?
I don't have anything.
I, I will, I will share something that I saw for you that I know you've brought up, that blotch of, uh, color on the side of Ross Dresser List is now the same color as the rest of the sign.
Oh, yeah.
They painted it.
No, they did. They did it, when did they do it, Friday? No, Lisa and I, no, I, I like saw, they were just finishing up when I drove by.
Oh.
I wrote her, and I said, did you notice that, cause I noticed the day before that they had scraped-
Yeah.
Yeah, remember I told you there were all these black marks? So I was freaking out because I went by one day and they had covered the Ross sign on the front of the store, and it was all white. And I text Lisa and I'm like, something's going on over there, they've got the Ross sign covered, but they must have been painting behind the signs, so I think they covered it up so it wouldn't splatter on the sign.
Also, I feel like I'm taking all your things, you said you didn't have any, um, they have made progress on paving certain areas.
Oh, did you see my email with the pictures?
No.
Oh, I sent every-
For the graphic and medical?
Hey, I went right over there and took pictures the other day and sent everybody, I, and I-
Drove on it for the first time, it's kind of, part of, part of the Loop Road was shut down while they were doing that, and then, uh, but yeah, it's much, much better.
Yeah, it is, I drove on it, too.
More stuff for people to go and do still, but, uh, it's much better than it was.
Yes.
It is.
Thank you.
Let's hope that they do the, the other bad parts. And unfortunately, they-
Well, yeah, I mean, let's stay on the Loop Road.
Yes.
I sort of have a question, and maybe this, what I'm about to describe is an encouraging sign, but when I drove down to BJ's this afternoon to get gas, I'd noticed, and coming out, coming out's worse, that a lot of those holes, it looks like the pavement's been milled down. Now, it's still a, it's still a, it's still a big bump.
Yep.
But I'm thinking, well, if it's been milled, is that an encouraging sign or going to affect it?
I did know, I noticed that the other-
Timeframe in which they said they would be working on it.
Oh, I'll drive, I'll drive down there tomorrow.
Timeframe in which they said they would be working on it.
I, I think so.
So they're, say they're working on it, like, this week.
There's a timeline.
There's a, a contract.
Timeframe, but I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Yeah, there, um, some of those areas where there were big potholes is you, like, right when you get past Target before you turn around to BJ's, that area has been milled down, so, right, it's still a bump, but it's like a, we're gonna fix this bump.
Okay, good, then they're cool.
Not a, eh, it's a single.
That's, that's what it looked like, so I was going to ask if anybody had any information about the timeframe in which you addressed.
And in good weather for it.
Yes, it's beautiful for people to be outside doing that. Anything else, Jim?
Um, no.
Okay, Lisa?
Okay, so I noticed that the trees, I guess this isn't for us, though, the trees that they planted by the Asian restaurant, pseudo-restaurant. They're pretty much died.
Do we require them to plant trees because they don't-
No, I think we had that done, didn't we, cause that was when we did the road and the side.
Oh, oh, you mean not.
So what, is that a DPW thing? Okay, that's number one. The other thing is, I wanted to say, I'm glad that Lorraine brought up the issue with Dairy, about Dairy One, that she noticed that, because I think that they will be a terrific asset to have a little ice cream thing there, but, um, this is not the first time that they just sort of went ahead and did something, and I'm wondering how, so that when and if, like, do they have to come for a special permit for this?
I was wondering, do we have to do a zoning?
Yeah, it's not allowed in that district.
High-density residential. High-density residential.
Yeah.
So I was going to also suggest that maybe we require them to buffer their propane tank at the same time when they come to us.
I don't.
Consider that. Because that was the other thing they just did, you know, without coming in. And I just, I'm concerned about stuff like that because I think businesses, for the most part, especially if they're regulatory businesses, would, how, how does this happen? How does this, so anytime we see something, I think it really behooves us all, if you notice anything, just ask Mike what's going on. Because.
He doesn't know.
Because he didn't know. So, I mean, it, it takes the village.
Yeah.
But I'm really glad you brought it up.
Well, I've been bringing it up for weeks.
I know.
No, I don't think anyone will believe me.
No, Mike went, Mike went out there just a couple of days later. It was just, he was waiting to get an email back from him, too.
Yeah, I saw the email and your response. I'm like, great idea.
But I, I brought this up like a month and a half ago or more. And I said, hey, have you heard anything from, I mean, I've mentioned it multiple times.
He went out there. He mentioned it at the meeting.
I just think it.
Unless you've mentioned it ten times.
I don't remember. I did mention it to, I did mention it to.
Oh, oh, gotcha, oh, okay.
Private, I guess, but.
Yeah, it was in private, I think, before the meeting started, yeah.
But anyway, I am concerned that, you know, how do we get the word out to businesses that we do have some rules here? You don't just, you know, do what you want. But the other thing is, is one of the things that's been bothering me, and I got to talk to Mike about this, is the temporary signage on Kayuga Blue. I just keep thinking, are they, it's banners. And I'm wondering, I, I looked at our definitions and maybe we want to look at some of that, too. Like, I know there's temporary signage, but it doesn't look like there's any restrictions or any timeframe. Maybe we want to consider some of that going forward. Maybe that would help with some of this stuff that we're trying to achieve. Because it just makes it look like it's.
Yeah.
Looks sloppy.
That's a good point.
It's, it's, honestly, it makes it look like Halloween Village. Like, hey, here's, there's a Halloween here store for a little bit. Hey, there's a hotel here for a little bit. No, that's a, it really is a good point. That's.
A sign has been there since they opened.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
No, and, and I didn't, I don't know when it started bothering me. All of a sudden I thought, you know, it's, initially I thought, oh, good, you know? And, and I, I happen to think a really nice-looking sign is just, it just sets such a tone for a business. And when you have a really good-looking sign, that's, it's just wonderful. And it just doesn't.
Now, and now, and they have a permanent sign now, which they didn't for quite a while, but.
The one up by the road?
They do have the one by the road now, so they don't need that.
The one on the building, yeah.
In which business are we talking?
Kayuga Blue.
The old Ramada, across from Tops. The hotel.
Across from Tops, across from Tops. I was saying, does that place, the old Sheraton?
Oh, no, no, that's.
Any changes?
That's.
Yeah, oh, that's right, Sheraton.
Yeah, no, that's all.
Okay.
He's shell shocked.
This has been great. I get to go along with all this with you and learn all this. And we're all going through it, too, because we've never all gone through this together. If it happened, it happened a long time ago before we were all here, so.
I think the thing that's a little overwhelming, though, is, you know, we, we get where we want it to be. And then you've got to start going to all the subs places where it touches. And do we need to really go now back to each of the districts and be sure that every single thing that we did is appropriate?
You know what I did, Lisa? I said, Natalie, we're making each stages, go through all those other sections.
She already told me before the meeting started, she's like, this is going to be a bear to write. Yes, we do, because the chart is just that. That is a.
That's right. And so it, but that's.
Find in there that has, has to be after.
So, I mean, it's like, whoa. So, but at least I do feel like we're making progress.
I think, I, I think the schedule that we've set with the kind of two meetings for each of the three sections, and then we'll go do, and we'll do a couple of like, you know, kind of first and second readings of everything through it, reference back to the code. And we can do that, too, right? I mean, we can all say, here's what the chart is, okay, Lorraine and I are going to go and do this. Lisa and I are going to go and do this. Or, you know, whoever is going to look at it and say, great, let's look through these things now. And when it says, oh, it's, oh, look down at 145, you know.
And you go there and it's missing, yeah.
Or fixing indent, because you're, you go from 40 to 42. Clearly, that indented one is 41. I know it is. It's just, so, yeah. It's just cleaning it up. And yeah, we'll do that.
And then actually just general formatting of the thing. Because when, when you highlight the definitions like you did here, that is just wonderful.
She's like, yeah.
I, I get into that. I can get into that. I really do.
I am terrible at formatting.
Well, I mean, we just have to make a decision what we want.
Well, it's like, you have to download this and convert it to a PDF, a PDF or Word, which means it's true. All the tags, and then you have to reformat all everything.
Or where you do, yeah, well, it depends on what it is. I used to be okay at it. I'm not so much anymore. But I'm just talking about when the definition, the actual thing itself, it gets lost. You can't even find home occupation without, where's, you know? It needs to be either underlined or some, we need to come up with a system format that to recommend, I think. So that it's easy to pick this stuff out of there.
Yeah.
I've gone through my E-code and.
Bold in italics?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll tear it up.
And underline or bold or something.
So Natalie and Lisa will agree with me, the manliest link that you sent, it was so nice to go in there with the E-code. And I was like, actually, I started reading other stuff because it was so easy to just click on the subject and you go right there. And everything was so organized and legible and in order. And I was like, I said to Lisa, I go, isn't that E-code wonderful?
I said, I said, wow, I said, that really is.
You know, some housecleaning of our own that we know we need to do, clearly.
Yeah.
It might be, like we said, it might be a, a good time to revisit that.
Yeah, but we need to get, but I think this is really an important exercise.
Yeah.
Carolyn.
You guys already know of the 2007.
No, I, but it's, this is very important to do what we're doing.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Us, even if we decide to go to E-code, it just, it doesn't fix this problem.
No.
It moves it over and you have to fix it either way and probably.
Yeah, this is not the type of.
Yeah, this is not.
No.
Um, okay, Natalie, any parting thoughts, final words?
No, I'll make the two changes that we discussed, the proposal flaw, and resend it to the Board of Trustees for their consideration on Thursday.
And I will send the trustees a note with our recommendation that we thought about. Good?
Good.
Which is, just to clarify, in CLT for bank administrative,
Yes.
we're removing all additional conditions. Just have it be a special permit, so they're allowed to have one teller, one ATM. And in CMT, there's, for high-traffic food and beverage, there shall be no more than one drive-through use permitted on any single parcel.
Correct.
Yes.
Great.
Excellent changes, team. I think that.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:56 PM.
I move to adjourn. Finally, board meeting September 8.
Motion, motion by Jim?
Second.
Oh, I was going to say, come on, Kevin.
Hi.
Guidelines?
No, you got to start practicing.
It's like usually.
I like just to hear, wait, I just need to, I want to say, I haven't, and I just haven't done it yet. I know you're.
But I'm not, it's like, next year anyway, but you're thinking about it, so.
Or.
So, well, this is.
By the way, saying, this is, this really. Does it have an Italian vibe?
Wow, my sister cut this for me.
Right.
The shirt, don't you think that shape has like a vibe?
I like it.
Can you get out of the meeting?
I have, I've had it swell at times.